Eighth meeting. Moved by Council Morocco, seconded by Council Thompson. Any discussion to the motion? If not, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Next, we're looking for disclosures of pecuniary interest. Do we have any, Council Thompson, and then Morocco, and then Wayne?
Conflict with the committee of the whole item regarding the Niagara 21st group. Declare conflict.
Okay, Council Morocco?
Yes, Your Worship. Check number 637042 made out to my spouse.
Okay, Council Wayne?
Yes, I have a potential conflict with the same encamorated as Council Thompson, so I declare conflict as well.
Okay, we got Council Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, under accounts two made out to Niagara Catholic District School Board, my employer.
Okay. No other? And myself, check number 367292. Check made out to myself. First item on tonight's agenda are reports, specifically CAO 201306. And this report deals with the city's position on a number of regional reports. So I guess our CAO is going to lead us in this presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Todd?
There's been a number of reports that have been undertaken by the region over the last several months, and back even, some of them are back a year or two. You can see the list of reports up on the first slide. And I'm going to give them a little bit of detail on those as we go along. But we just felt it was time to come to council and just give an overview of what our staff positions are. Because I can tell you that all of the staff, all the senior staff, or most of the senior staff, have been feeling some frustration over our voice being heard at the regional level. And our feeling is, is that, you know, there's a commenting opportunity on a report. And quite often, either we are brought into the loop way at the end of the process, or that our comments basically are falling on deaf ears. And I'm talking about the staff level. And these are certainly things that I'll be addressing with the new CAO, as the new CAO is engaged, and I believe starts at the beginning of November.
Excuse me, just one second, Mr. CAO. Council Thompson?
Yes, I appreciate bringing this report to our attention. And spent considerable time in the weekend reading every line of this. And as I read through it, I became more increasingly disturbed about what is happening, and what are, what decisions are being made at the region without the municipality or the local council knowing about it. I appreciated several months ago when we had a synopsis of the regional issues that were brought before us, so that we would be brought up to date and know what was going on. I'd appreciate if that continued on. But it looks like the regional council is, and the city are at odds on almost every one of these issues. And I'm wondering if our voice is not being heard at the region on these issues, because they're all extremely important. They all have to do with the municipality looking after its own responsibility. It appears that the region is really interested in converting everything to regional responsibility, with the exception of regional government and governments, which every time it comes up, they shy away from. This report is, I think, very disturbing, and I hope the rest of the council feels the same way, that the regional council is moving in a direction which is really taking the decision-making and the responsibility away from the local councils in most of the key areas that we are still responsible for. So I don't know whether this is a planned situation, where they're going to try to implement all of these issues, and then make a quick motion to eliminate the local municipalities. Looks like that's their plan of action. But I hope everybody is concerned with this as much as I was when I was reading it. Because huge, major issues, and the region is taking a different course on almost every one of them here. And hopefully, we can hold our own when it comes to most of these issues. But very, very important report. I'm glad it's being brought to our attention, but I would like to have seen most of these things being updated to the council as we were going through it. This has been going over since July 2010. That's concerning. We should have been aware of these things, and hopefully, we can hold our own when it comes to the final decision.
Yeah, Council, we appreciate those comments. That's why we've decided to take a proactive approach. Because oftentimes, as you know, you've got a lot of experience at the region, things get brought to you, and you're forced to react. So we wanted this council's positioning, so when I speak at the region, I don't speak for my opinion. I want to be able to speak for our opinion. And we have a direction. So that's why our CAO is proactive enough to put everything together. I asked him about one specific direction, and he decided to do everything, which is, I think, excellent. And it gives us a good positioning, and then we can share this with our regional counselors, all three of them. So hopefully, all three of them will understand the city's position, and will reflect that at the region. I think that's our goal. And in fairness to them, if they don't know, yeah, okay, and in fairness, if they don't know where we stand, they end up maybe making their own opinion, and we're hoping that we can share that with all of them, to bring it.
Maybe this should go with all of the other larger municipalities to do the same.
It's a good idea. It's a very good idea. Council Morocco?
I have to say that I totally agree with Council Thompson's comments in regards to the report. I have to say, there wasn't one thing that our staff fully support, and there was a number of notes that I made as well, and questions, and it just seemed that, I don't know if they thought that this was just going to come, and we were just going to give it a rubber stamp, and they go back, and we just be quiet and not say anything. But I have to say that I do respect that my, our mayor, you, sits there on our behalf, and I think you're a strong voice. But I really hope that the other three representatives there are also strong voices for us. And if not, I would like to know where they stand on these issues. Because it concerns me, therefore, we have four people there representing this city of Niagara. And I think that, I don't know, I mean, you've got two counselors, I can't speak for the rest, that are not happy with the report that came back here, just thinking that we're just going to rubber stamp it and put our heads down, let them go on their way with doing what they seem to want to be in control of. So I'm not too sure, I'm not willing just to take this, but I think there needs to be a motion to actually take this back and have further dialogue as to, we're not going to just accept the status quo, if that's what they think.
So maybe at the end, too, we'll make a motion to share this with our regional counselors, and maybe even have them come in here and address council.
Yes, I definitely like to put that motion forward. I don't want to wait, then. So I hope I have someone to support that motion.
Okay. Well, we can throw that right now on the table, that we invite, so moved by Council Morocco, looking for a seconder to invite our regional counselors. Moved by Council Wayne, we invite our regional counselors to council, to future council meeting, to share our perspective on these different issues, and encourage them to carry the ball for us. So we'll call that vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous? Okay, great. So, Mr. Todd, it's all yours.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments, and thank you, counselors, for, I can tell you, this is, it's been quite a bit of frustration at the staff level. I would say that my comments tonight in the presentation is not aimed at the regional council, because some of these reports, quite frankly, have not fully made their way through regional council yet. My comments are more aimed at the process that our staff is engaged at, with regional staff. One of the things I intend on doing is, the mayor and I actually will be having a meeting fairly shortly with the new regional CAO. And I will personally be bringing this report to his attention, and letting him know some of the frustrations that we faced. I've actually had a conversation with him, and have indicated to him that I truly feel there is that disconnect between what the comments of all of our directors are, and what the feeling at the regional level is. And we quite often feel, many times, that our comments are taken to the regional level, and quite frankly disappear into a black hole. And we just felt tonight, even though my presentation is not in great detail, we tried to just hit on some of the major issues that are of concern. We did send, or had by electronic copy some of the reports. Didn't really expect council to get into the detail of all the reports, but just wanted to give an idea, if there was a report there that you wanted to get into a little bit more detail, that you'd have the opportunity to be able to go and review that. And certainly, any of the directors are here tonight, or available by phone call, or if you wanted to discuss any of these details, or any of these reports in greater detail, we'd be happy to do that. This is our chance just to say to you that, you know, we're feeling some frustration that at a staff level, our voice, or our comments are not being heard at the regional level. And really wanted to go on the record on some of these to let council know, get council's backing on it. And therefore, when the regional counselors or the mayor are there, making our position known at the region, it has the backing of this council. So those are the reports. I won't go there in detail, there's several of them. I'll try to just go through a synopsis on each one. But just so council knows, and Dean, you can just click on the whole list here, these again are your strategic priorities. And what we do as a staff, is whenever we're reviewing these reports, we're putting it in context with what we believe you as a council want us to do, and how you want us to react to any regional reports. So you have to remember that, that anything we're doing is in the context of what you told us at the beginning of this term, you wanted to see in terms of your priorities. So we're carrying your message forward at the staff level. So if we get into a little bit of detail, so the first one deals with all sewage pumping stations, and Mr. Holman and his staff, this report really deals around putting it in context, is that there's a new regional DC study that's out there, and the region has not included the construction costs for pumping stations in their development charges calculation. It's an asset that they will own, and it's an asset that they're responsible for. And we feel, because it's definitely growth-related, it should be included in that DC. Their position is that we're not including it in the DC. So right now, you know from our level, we have it in our DC bylaw. And we're saying it really should be at that level. And what happens is that we put it in our DC bylaw, we are then compelled to collect it, and then at some point in time, that asset gets turned over to the region. Now, from Mr. Harrison's standpoint, there's a cash flow issue, because until we collect those DCs, if we've constructed that force main, or, sorry, the pumping station force main at the front end, we're doing the cash flow on that until we get our DCs in our pocket. We really think this is a regional responsibility. So far, it's fallen on deaf ears. They have not included it in their DCs bylaw, and we really think that's something that should happen. It's their asset, and they should be collecting those DCs at that level, other than ours collecting the development charges at our level. So I think that one's a pretty straightforward issue. Mr. Holman can certainly speak in more detail on it if you need it, so.
Council Gates?
Thanks, Mary Daddie. This is one that I've had a lot of dialogue over since I actually got elected on council three years ago. And I think going back, where our council of the day got some bad advice on how we funded the pumping stations in Garden Road South, and the borrowing of the money, and I agree with you that I think it is a responsibility that should be taken up by the region for that particular issue. Because as you know, we borrow the 11, 10, 12, 13, 14 million dollars, and then we pay interest on that money, and then we wait for the development to be done, to collect the DCs, and sometimes, and who knows, even in this case, because I don't know, you might never collect the full amount. You don't know that. So I think this is a very important issue, because you can take that money that we've borrowed, and use it on infrastructure in the city, our roads, whatever, new fire station, whatever we're going to use, where we're spending it in interest. So I, when I read this, I had a bit of a smile on my face. I think it's a very good report. I think you're right on the money on exactly how it should be funded. I also agree that it's tougher for a developer to front-load that, if you wanted to develop in your city. So there's got to be a way to do this, and I think you're right on the money on this one. So I'd like to say that I certainly would support whatever you're doing here. This is exactly what we should have done, and we probably shouldn't have done what we did three, four years ago, although that was the only way to get the development done. I realize that.
And thank you, Council. And that was the dilemma at the time for the council of the day, because if you really wanted to see and get development moving, which, you know, is a great thing for the city, that was the only mechanism that was available to us. And what we're saying is, this really should be turned on the other side to say, you know, we've got development coming. It's your asset. If we, if we ended up owning these, it's a whole different story. But these are the region's assets, and they really should be looking after the funding mechanism for it. So I'm not sure there's much more we need to say about that one, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Holman or Harrison, you want to speak? The second one is our dispatch review. And the chief and I have had many, many conversations about this. The chief had a prior commitment tonight, but I certainly have been very versed in this over the last several years. And the region undertook a study of their communication system. And what really bothered us right from the beginning was that there was an assumption that each local municipality, fire department, now, now, City St. Catherine's dispatch is for many local municipalities, but there is the police, and there's the fire dispatch, that there was an assumption at the regional level that that was inefficient. In other words, they were telling us that we were running our business inefficiently. And what we had indicated to them was, you know, don't make that assumption. If you're going to start down the path of a review of this, to me, the first part of the review should be, let's do a look at the current situation. Let's do an analysis to say, is it working or not working? And based on that, you would proceed to a second step. If things were working well, you would conclude and say, things seem to be working okay. That step was completely skipped. They just jumped to the step of, it must be broken, and we want to do this study. And our position is, is that we've invested in our radio system quite currently. We have up-to-date technology. And it's our belief that right now, we are efficiently handling our call volumes that we have. And the chief is quite satisfied with that. I think our response on the way we handle it, I don't think any counselor probably has gotten any call about the inefficiency of how we handle response calls from our fire dispatch. And our view is that, from our perspective as a city, that we would consider getting into a review of our dispatch at such point as our call volumes became so great that our current staffing levels and systems couldn't handle it, or at some point in the future that we're going to need new infrastructure. In other words, we're going to have to get into another capital investment. And we quite frankly put that position forward to the region, and there still is a movement afoot. Where the chief and I have another meeting with the CAO and chief in St. Catherine's tomorrow to talk about this further. Our position is that right now, we're satisfied with the status quo. Again, that's fallen on deaf ears at the region, and the region seems insistent on keep pushing forward this idea that we can only have, or we should only have one dispatch system throughout the region.
Thank you, Council Thompson?
Yes, I think we identified a few years ago that our system was inadequate, and I think we spent several millions of dollars within the last, what, three?
Yes.
Three years to upgrade our system. And if we got into a situation where we were taken over by the region, we'd certainly be paying for everybody else upgrading their systems. And are we going to be caught in the same situation if they start amalgamating other, taking over other municipalities? And we're going to be picking up the tab for that at the regional level anyway?
Well, I think the thing that, I think is most concerning in this is the unknown of what that cost of making this happen. And I agree with you. This cost would be significant. And again, we being the second largest municipality, would be picking up a significant part of that price tag. Right now, we're saying our infrastructure's good, we have a new radio system, and until such time as we need to get into the next cycle of replacing that, we're in a good place.
But if they move ahead with this as a regional council, they're probably going to be paying.
Well, on our regional levy, we would be on the hook for 20, 25% of that bill, based on the region.
Up to 10 million.
And it's a significant, it's a significant investment. And again, as we're saying right now, you know, we believe that we have invested recently in our system. The chief is satisfied that his staff, well-trained staff, are adequately handling our needs at the present time. As growth continues, we may need to take that next step and say, look, we need more staffing, we need new equipment, now it's maybe time to say, let's look and see whether, you know, a different model is applicable. But our, I guess my original point was, this dispatch review never went through that initial analysis even to determine what the system was to begin with. And that was frustrating right from the beginning for us. So our position is still firm, that we believe we're in a good place right now, and that we would consider looking at another dispatch reviewer system at such time as we needed to upgrade our system, or that we need to hire additional staffing. So that's what the recommendation is important.
If you could just expand your existing system, too, you may have to go into the region.
No, we would, at that point in time, we would come back and say, you know, we could review our staffing levels, what the additional cost of the infrastructure would be, and there would be options that we would present to council at that time. We are probably out, I'm sorry, with the chief, but we're, I would say we're probably a good, at least seven years before we even need to have that discussion. I would think somewhere in that neighborhood, from our perspective. Thank you, Dean. If you could go to the next one. Now, this water wastewater, this has been before council before. Jeff has presented reports, and we had a pretty good dialogue on it. I can tell you this, I've been involved in several discussions at the regional CAO's level, and Jeff has been involved with several discussions at the municipal works level. Todd has been in discussions at the regional treasurer's level. I can tell you almost unanimity amongst those groups regionally, that this is not a good thing right now for the region, local municipalities. We continue to take that position. The region again continues to push forward on this. Quite frankly, I would believe if we were moving to this, we would probably be better off taking over our entire system ourselves, without going the other way into a regional system. Our feeling is, is that first of all, transferring responsibility for water and wastewater up to the regional level would hamper our ability to make development decisions, and to be able to look at redevelopment decisions. So right now, that's in the control of you around this table. We have capital dollars that we are going to invest on the streets, and neighborhoods, and expansions where we believe are right. If this went up to the regional level, I believe that it makes those local decisions, and our strategic plan, and our strategic priorities, they now become what is the regional strategic priority. And our feeling is that this council and this city should have control over what those decisions are with respect to those local services. And that's why we continue to say we're not in favor of this, that we continue to believe that this council around here, and through our water and wastewater budgets, we're the ones that should be making those decisions on those priorities. So that continues to be our position. I don't know if Mr. Holman wants to speak a little bit further on this?
Can I ask, maybe you can explain how we, because it was explained, we were, I was asking at the region, how is this a benefit to us in any way? Try to explain, you know, the savings. Currently, when we purchase, whether it's pipe, or any kind of physical products or services, do we buy through a buying group with the region currently? How do we purchase things in that regard, whether it's trailings or anything like that? How do we purchase, Mr. Holman?
Well, for capital, infrastructure projects, greedy tender, the projects, and the contractor acquires materials through that process, it's not something that we stockpile necessarily. But if there are opportunities for shared resources or shared services.
Exalt.
We do work amongst public works officials to try and achieve some cost savings through economies of scale and scope.
So Road Salt is an example?
Road Salt is a good example, where we participate in a bulk purchase, and we'll stockpile as much as we need. And then we work with other groups inside our own municipality. We work with the casino and parks commission to share those resources as well.
Yeah, I think a lot of us feel the same way, to give up our autonomy, and then, you know, then the attention's going to be given wherever the squeakiest wheel is in the region. And whereas right now, we maintain control of it. So what's the incentive? And, no, they keep saying, throwing numbers out there. I've yet to see it personally, you know, explained on how and where exactly we would save money. So I just want to know, I let you know that we also echo this position. And I made it clear, our position up until now, hasn't come to the region yet, but it's going to be coming, this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And our feeling on the last comment is, we believe a decrease in level of service. We also believe that we would experience a decrease in our fair share of what that water, wastewater budget may be if transferred to the region, because there may be other smaller municipalities, or municipalities that need additional infrastructure. We have up to this point, I think, done a pretty good job over the last several years of trying to keep up with our infrastructure improvements. There may be other municipalities that haven't done that. And, you know, for all the good we've done now, those that have not kept up with it, they would have to then pour more dollars in to play catch-up. And, you know, we feel that, you know, that is going to be a disadvantage to the residents of the city of Niagara Falls. So our position has been the same. We've been consistent on this one since the beginning of the study. Both Mr. Harrison and Mr. Holman have been very actively involved at committees at the regional level. And again, even though there's a very, very strong message from the collective local municipalities, the region just seems insistent on continuing to push this along. The next one is, it's around a study that, quite frankly, I'm not even sure we really knew a lot about this study. And this one kind of, I know Mr. Hurlovich and his staff are very active in keeping in tune with it. This one just came to our attention recently, and it's called Niagara Nodes and Corridors Study. And we just believe that, in our official plan, we've identified codes and nodes and corridors, and I don't believe there's many other municipalities that even do that around the region. In here, we are saying that we're trying to protect our interests as a city in terms of having our official plan replicated within this nodes and corridor study. So some of the ones that Mr. Hurlovich and his staff have specifically identified, and if we just go to the next bullet on here, these are the ones that we think should be included. One very important one is the QEW employment corridor, that this council has gone on record as wanting to have developed and identified. The Lyons Creek Interchange Node, which again is the location of the next Niagara Health Hospital. We have the Sodom Road Interchange that for a number of years has been identified in our official plan, but not identified here. And we've also identified a number of go-transport mobility hubs and go-train stops. So downtown being one of the most important in terms of having that identified as a mobility hub. We want to make sure that we're on top of this, and that our interests and our priorities, again tying back to your strategic priorities, that these get included at the regional level in their document. Because again, we don't want to be left out of the loop where, and I'll get into this a little bit further on the next report, but we don't want to be left out of the loop where some other municipality has identified these, and we're left behind because all of a sudden now it gets adopted as a regional report, and these items would no longer be a priority, because they haven't identified it even though we have. a priority, because they haven't identified it, even though we have. So, we're suggesting that Mr. Hurlovich and his staff make sure that these items are pushed forward for inclusion in this nodes and corridor study.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of all the other ones, but is Mountain Road and QEW included as one of the nodes?
It's, I believe that it's included in the QEW Employment Corridor. Alex, if you want.
Mr. Hurlovich?
Yeah.
So, how come we've had so much trouble in trying to get that into the urban boundaries, if it's included in one of the nodes for employment development?
Well, it's in our nodes, and we're trying to say to the region, you should be including it in yours as well. And that's the dilemma, is that we all around have been saying that QEW Corridor, including the Mountain Road, QEW Interchange, is an important employment corridor, and it should be included. So, that's why we need to reinforce this, so the region identifies it that way as well.
I would like to see that specifically mentioned, now that we've passed the inclusion in the urban boundary. Still no MB hearing to come, but I would like that included in there, specifically, not just as employment lands for the corridor.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's huge, there's great development out there.
I just, I don't recall any actual text of the report, whether we specifically broke out the Mountain Road Interchange, but we could certainly do that. Yeah, we could certainly add that in there. It was meant to be included in the QEW Corridor, but...
Thank you. Counselor Peter Ansel?
Thank you, worship. Just through you to Ken. Ken, just to give council a better understanding of, I guess, the nodes and corridors that have been identified, can you just give a brief overview of the ones that have been identified in Niagara Falls, and perhaps the ones that have been identified elsewhere?
I think I, Alex, Mr. Hurlovich, maybe better to answer the detailed ones outside.
Yeah, I'm afraid I didn't look as much at what the other municipalities had identified, but certainly, within Niagara Falls, the region recognized only the SciTech lands, where the Gale Center is, and the downtown. So there were many other nodes that we felt these ones, as the CAO has pointed out on the screen, being important. From our perspective, we believe that they not only are important to our municipality, but they're important regionally, in terms of bringing jobs, in terms of improving the economy, in terms of strengthening the region in general. And to, in my opinion, short-sightedly, look at SciTech property that we have yet to get a road into, to even open it up, just flies in the face of logic to me. So we had shared these comments with the region, but again, we really felt, you know, in talking with our CAO, that in order to get the attention of the regional staff and the regional council, we needed to put this into a report that our council could actually endorse and stand behind, so that we had the full strength of what we believe will help the city and the region.
Counselor?
Thank you, worship. And these lands here are part of a CIP, are they not?
Mr. Hurlovich?
Which lands are those?
The lands that have been identified as the nodes and corridors that they want to be developed?
Portions of them have, but not, we do have a citywide CIP.
No, I understand that. But these ones have been defined regionally through a CIP, or?
No, they haven't. I'm not aware that these ones that we've listed have been included.
I thought we dealt with a report a couple of months ago, that dealt with employment lands throughout the region, and being part of a CIP.
I remember that. That was the economic gateway zone? Economic gateway zone and centers?
Yes, and that would have included part of the QEW Corridor, and again, the Sodom Road Interchange, the Lyons Creek Interchange.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. CAO?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next one deals with something that we've talked about quite a bit around the council, horseshoes, the whole idea of sewer overflow, combined sewers, sewer separation. And this one, again, goes back to a regional policy that our staff had been trying to get the region to change. Mr. Holman and his group have been very proactive locally, to get alternative methods for downspoke disconnection, weeping tower programs. And what we're trying to do is convince the region that their eligibility under their regional policy should include funding for those things as well. We just think it makes sense, it's something that we're doing. If we could piggyback on funding from them, where there may be matching funding for those kind of initiatives, we think right now that it should be included. Up to this point in time, those types of initiatives have not been part of the funding under that regional control policy, and Mr. Holman and his staff are insistent that that should be included. So, we're keeping, pushing that at the regional level, and we think that's an initiative that's very important to the city. The next one is, this whole regional development phasing, and this one's got us concerned from our perspective, is that we have invested a lot of money in the ground, we have set ourselves up to be a pro-development community, in the sense that we have available residential land. It was interesting, because just a couple of weeks ago, we were at an event for an opening of a new subdivision down in the south end of the city, and they literally had lineups of people wanting to get and buy those homes in that newly opened area. And it was just an indication to us that, you know, that's just really where the new growth in the region should be. Our fear is, under this kind of phasing approach, is that, under the regional policy, it may direct growth to other areas that are emerging, or greenfield, rather than focusing on areas currently that are there and ready to go. And it just kind of concerned our staff a little bit, that some of the wording would take us, we understand in the regional policy plan, there's a Grow South initiative, but we're saying we should be taking advantage of existing corridors, like the QEW, and existing growth areas like South Niagara Falls, that are already readily serviced and ready to go, rather than trying to direct a market demand to areas of the peninsula that people really have no interest, or little, or less interest than some of the developed areas, to try to force development there. So, our concern is that we think that we should look at taking full advantage of our highway access in our currently serviced areas in the south end, and that we shouldn't really look, or there shouldn't be a policy directive that artificially directs market demand away from areas that currently don't have that demand. So, it's artificially trying to say the region, in their phasing, would try to force development and servicing in an area. And I'll use the example, on a sort of, you know, Welland-Porkholborn corridor, away from a major corridor like a QEW-St. Catharines-Nagara Falls-Fort Erie corridor, and, you know, forced development that way, where there's already existing demand, and existing access, and major highway links along existing corridors. So, that's our belief in where our position sits. Again, following on council's strategic priorities, and that's what the direction of our staff is, that we're putting forward to council. So, Mr. Mayor, I think that pretty well summarizes... Oh, I'm sorry. We have one, yes, and this is a very important one, actually, I'm sorry.
Counselor Gates, excuse me, Ken.
But it's interesting here, that when we talk about jobs for the Niagara area, why we don't take advantage of exactly what's available, whether it be in the south, or right here. We have a border that's, you know, five minutes from here, where the big economic challenges are there. We could go there, we could have, we could utilize that. Instead, they continue to grow away from the border, quite frankly. If you're coming down the QEW, if you watch around Grinsby, what's going on there, where they're growing there, where they're not coming this way. And I really think we're missing the boat on the job opportunity, not only for tourism, but also for manufacturing, right here in Niagara, with being close to not only Fort Erie, but the border right here. So it doesn't make a lot of sense. But what I wanted to ask, and maybe you can explain this, because I think this is important for the citizens, in the last paragraph on page eight, I don't know if you could turn to that.
Yeah.
On the bottom line.
Yeah.
That is, spend the DC dollars in the municipality where they are generated.
Yes.
And maybe you could explain that, why that's important for Niagara Falls, and for other communities as well.
Well, I think our importance on that comment is that, as DCs are generated, members of public health know, there's a local development charge, and there's a regional development charge. And, you know, if growth is happening in Niagara Falls, and there's no growth somewhere else, the concern is that those development charges at the regional level, that are generated in the city of Niagara Falls, are spent elsewhere, redirected on a priority at the regional level, that does not address our priority. So, that's the concern, that, and that, I think, quite frankly, has been, what has been happening a lot at the regional level, is that the growth communities are seeing a lot of their development charges money redirected to slower-growth or non-growth municipalities, where they would gain the advantage of enhanced regional services, where that isn't being spent within the municipality that it was generated in. And back to your first comment, Counsel, and it's very, it's bang on with what our staff thinking is. Our belief is that, if you go anywhere along any major, in any major urban area, along a major provincial highway, there is employment growth opportunities. We really feel that that corridor, right from Mountain Road, right through the city, right out, quite frankly, to Fort Erie, and we've had, we actually have a very good relationship with Fort Erie, and Mr. Fellasetti, and the economic development people in Fort Erie, we truly believe that should go right to the bridge, right to the border. And we believe that it's such an underdeveloped, untapped opportunity to have employment lands along those frontages, that you have easy access to not only major highways, but to international borders. So, we couldn't agree more with that comment.
Can I just add to that? I've been waiting for somebody other than myself, quite frankly, to say that for ten years. Because I've spoke on this issue a lot over the last number of years, on what's been transpiring around manufacturing, don't give up on manufacturing jobs, don't give up on tourism, and there is a real opportunity around the two borders. And it's nice to hear you say that, so I'm quite pleased by your comment.
Well, and I can tell you, the economic development directors, Mr. Fellasetti, Fort Eries, and St. Catharines, they are, this is one of their major drivers, and they are all over this. They have a very good working relationship, and they're pushing this. They've actually got their own group that meet as economic development officers to push this whole initiative. And it's something that we keep trying to, again, be made known at the regional level. Because, in our opinion, quite frankly, we should be pushing the QEW Corridor, as opposed to, for example, 406 Corridor. And that may sound very biased, it may sound parochial, but I think in the fact that you've got a major international connection there, it makes, you know, it makes all the sense in the world, as far as we're concerned.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on to the last one, then, the intermunicipal transit pilot project. And this is one, again, that we've had before this council several times. Councilor Maves is involved in some of the committee work at the regional level. Mr. Tren, very actively involved with Mr. Stewart. Our position is one that we're not, let me put it in a nutshell, we're really not anti-one-tier transit. Our view is, is that it needs time to cultivate, and it needs time to grow. And we don't think that time is here yet. We don't believe that the pilot project that we undertook is there to be able to justify that we go to one level. Because, again, once you go to one level of municipal transit, that system or service is going to have tentacles out to your rural areas, lesser populated areas, which, again, at the regional level, we would end up picking up a significant portion of that tax bill tab for our local residents under a regional levy. What we've said here is, we truly believe that there's a place for the three transit properties, and you have to appreciate, there's only three transit properties in the region, St. Catharines, Niagara Falls, and Welland. And what we have done is, in the pilot project that's currently undergoing, we have been the ones that have been providing the service. So, even though you see those regional transit buses running around, those are actually Niagara Falls Transit employees, along with Welland Transit employees, and St. Catharines Transit employees, running, operating that service on behalf of the region. So, we're the ones that are invested in the transit business. Our position is, is that the region now, and I believe this is coming, or supposed to be coming back to the region very soon.
Thursday we deal with it.
Thursday. Our position is, is that to make that leap from where we are today to one system is not the right move to make. Our belief is that we should let the current pilot continue, and look at an additional extension to that pilot, to be able to have enough ridership garnered. We believe that we should be, and the three transit properties, we've had this discussion and are in agreement with it, is basically an express connector system between the three municipalities. In other words, right now, what you will see, is you will see a regional transit bus come through the city, and it's duplicating the routes we already provide. It's duplication. What we envision is a couple of major hubs, where our Niagara Falls Transit would operate our routes to those hubs. The regional connector system would pick up at a couple of significant hubs, whether it be a Niagara Square, a Walmart, a Target Plaza, whatever, they would pick up at those regional hubs, and do a direct express route to Welland-St. Catharines. That way, there's no duplication on our routes, and there's an opportunity there to drive ridership between communities, without taking ridership either off the local system. Currently now, as well, we are operating pretty much duplicate service on those routes, because we have a contract with the two major educational institutions. And as we're running our educational institution buses, the region is running a bus right behind us. We don't believe that really makes sense. And again, we don't, we're not making profit on that. We're basically providing that service to the educational institutions on a break-even basis. That's in the direction of this council, we think it's a good service to provide. But, again, we believe there's duplication. So we believe there's an opportunity here to slowly grow this by working together with the region, with the three properties, and at some point down the road, we may need to have this discussion, that, yes, now we're ready, the ridership is there, the interconnectivity between municipalities has grown to the point where a regional transit system may be viable. We just really do not believe we're there at this point yet, and our position is, is that we continue with the pilot, that we look at the interconnectivity, and let us work on that, and then at some point, we can report back and say, we believe the ridership is adequate, and we should move on to the next step. So, that's our position, Mr. Mayor, on that one. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Todd. I've got Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Maves.
Yes, I personally would like to have heard you be a little more forceful in your comments with respect to having a regional transit. We have it in place now. The ridership, from what I understand, is insignificant. We are running our buses for Brock University and Niagara College, and that's something that's been in place for 25 years or more, and I think that works. I think we're unique in the region with the Wego system. I would hate to see that the region would be telling us what to do with our transit buses with the Wego system that we have for tourism, and I think that we have to be... And I think that we have to be extremely careful to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that this is our livelihood. The WGO system is extremely important to this community where it is not with any other community in the region. And I wouldn't want to be caught in a position where all of a sudden the region would be saying, well, you know, things are a little slower, we'll shift some of the WGO buses someplace else. I think what is going on right now is a trial period. It's demonstrating that the ridership is not there. I think in the last several years, the council has been proactive in acquiring some new buses and bringing our fleet up to a, certainly substantially above what it's been in the past. And I think with the OLG dollars, we're going to be in a position to have a first-class transit system, a first-class WGO system in this city where the other ones are not going to be able to participate. And we're the ones that are going to be paying if we don't do that. So I would, I would be very careful of even suggesting that we're interested in a regional transit system, other than getting them from the major municipalities and assisting that way. Other than that, I'd like to make sure we're very strong in suggesting that we're different, unique, and we're certainly separate from St. Catherine's or any other municipality when it comes to transit.
Thank you, Councilor. We, we've made it very clear in the report that the WGO system is off limits, if you will. Completely different system, and we totally agree on that point, because there's been major capital investment made in this community, and that's something certainly that is hands-off in terms of a regional system. And we're certainly not suggesting that, you know, the long-term is a regional system. We're saying right now, the region wants to jump right to that now. We're saying there's way too much, you know, work that needs to be done before you could even consider that. There's way too much analysis, especially on the interconnection, that needs to be done before they could even consider that. So we've tried to put forward something that would give them a solution to the problem by providing interconnectivity and leaving that responsibility to the three major transit properties that exist today.
You know, it's the old story from day one with the region. The municipalities that have are providing for the ones that have not. And it's costing everybody in this municipality a substantial amount of money. And all of these things that we've been talking about here are going to adversely affect us and the taxpayer in this city if we ever have let the region have success in what we're talking about.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other questions.
Yep. You've got Counselor Maves?
Yeah, Your Worship, I have to totally agree with what our stance on this. I sit on the Transportation Strategy Steering Committee, and I think the three main objections to this, the way I see it, is the geography, it says in your first sentence, is not conducive to an integrated system. I think the other thing is too, we're criticized now for our level of service. If it went regionally, I'm sure it would even get worse, so be further criticism. And I think number three, just looking at the cost of it, I mean, they're losing money on it now. I think it's way too costly. And I think probably some years down the road, when our municipalities start to get closer together, perhaps this could be something of the future. But I think they're way premature with this, and I think we still have to maintain our stance on this and resist this for now, until such time, as they say, populations get that much larger where we can finance it and run it properly.
You know, Counselor Maves, I agree completely with what you said. It's the geography. And I heard the, one of the radio DJs, Tom O'Connell, on CKTB 610 talking the other day, and he's from Burlington, and he said, you don't hear Oakville discussing merging with Mississauga, nor, merging with Burlington. And you're right, for we have so much geography, such expansive geography, it makes no sense. And only three municipalities have transits. And out of 12 municipalities, you know what would happen? That would water it down for the rest of the region, or it would raise the price significantly. And since we pick up 20% of the tab, I agree, it costs us more money to get less service. So it's a dangerous, and Counselor Thompson and the COs are bang on, he put right in the report, right, the WGO system's not to be considered. So that's off the table, but we agree. And I, also St. Catherine's has a report coming forward as well, I was reading this afternoon, and they feel the same way as us. Extend the pilot, let's work this and make it better, because right now there's so much duplication, buses, like they say, pointed out, going to Brock right behind each other. It's ridiculous. You'll see three buses in a row, and there's got to be better coordination. And I think the nice thing about this, this encapsulates our position, and we're going to share it with the other regional counselors, going to bang the drum at the region, make it clear where we stand. That's what I love about what the CIO did. He took it a step further and made sure, here it is, here's where we stand, you know? We won't do it one at a time, here's all the issues. It's a good approach. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I know a number of these issues have come to us individually, but it's nice to see them all in one, all in one comprehensive report. I, I think most of these issues come down to two main items, one being control and the other being money. And a lot of times when the region talks about assuming control of a service, there's the illusion that's given that it's going to be more efficient if it's operated at the regional level. And I always, Your Worship, go back to garbage collection. When the region came to us and said that they were going to take over garbage, they were going to operate it, they were going to use the regional dump, so it's going to be more efficient. You know, I, I mean, I regret ever passing the service on to the region because of where it's at now. The people in Niagara Falls have a reduced level of service, and there's absolutely no control for us anymore over garbage services. And in fact, the regional government doesn't even operate garbage services anymore. They contracted out. So I'm very hesitant, and I always will be, Your Worship, about passing any service up to the region.
Okay, other comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other comments, our position is that we would take the report and we will be circulating that to the region. There was a motion that we would share that with the other regional counselors, and I heard that there was also an amendment that under the section on notes, we would specifically include the Mountain Road interchange, so perhaps, Mr. Quirk, we could include that in the motion as well. Unless there's any other questions. As I, and circulate the other municipalities. As I indicated, I'll be having a discussion with the new regional CIO. I'll be going over all of these items with him. Quite frankly, he, him and I have already had a conversation about the fact that I truly believe there needs to be a better relationship between the regional municipalities and the region. I think he wholeheartedly agrees with that, because, you know, he's previously held the position of CIO in the town of Fort Erie and faced the same kind of issue. So, you know, I think he gets it, I think he understands where that disconnect is. So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's anything else, that's the motion.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion that we, Niagara Falls take our position, we forward this to the region municipality of Niagara with the extra, the addendums. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. There's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that is unanimous. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Move to consent agenda.
Okay, oh yes, Counselor Carrio? Okay, so we'll pull that one. Anyone want any other items pulled from the consent agenda?
Move the ballot.
Okay, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves, that we move the remainder of the consent agenda. We'll call that a vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's passed. And now Counselor Carrio, F-2013-57, adding Provincial Offense Act POA fines to the tax law. Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Morocco?
I don't agree with the recommendation on this report. I don't think this is someplace that we should be going. There's too many unanswered questions. The report is fairly comprehensive, but it doesn't tell me what happens if tenants incur a fine, and then is the property owner on the hook for it, discriminates against property owners. Fines, do the fines then go ahead of the mortgagees, mortgage companies, banks? I don't, you know, I don't think we've talked to them. I'm sure they wouldn't be excited about this. Then the outstanding fines, would they be subject to the penalties and exorbitant interest rates that the city charges on their outstanding taxes? I'm sure that, I read that it would be in here. So for those and many other reasons, I'm going to encourage the council not to do this. Hopefully that they'll have read it the way I do, and if they're not, if they disagree, at least we should do a public, get some public input, some input from some mortgage companies, some other people. And then maybe if we're going to vote for this, you might want to spend a day in a provincial court, see some of the fines that are levied against some of our business people and landowners before you'd ever agree to this. So I'd vote, I'd move after the discussion that we do not add the provincial offenses fines to the tax law, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you very much. We've got Counselor Morocco and then Counselor Maves?
And I'll second that motion not to accept. I actually just think that it's another service being downloaded from the region to the municipality. And aside from that, when you, when you look at the kind of, actually, it says, will have minimal impact on city resources. I find that very hard to believe. And then we have to now start looking at tracking down offense fines for provincial offenses, that it's just an unbelievable burden on our own staff to try and track that down. They said, actually, it would only be at their last recourse of trying to track it down themselves. But I mean, we still have to put a whole new system. I cannot believe it will be minimal. So in the short, there's just no way I can think that we can support this. The region can keep that.
Okay, thank you very much. So we've got motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Morocco, that we do not, in fact, follow the recommendation. Is there any other discussion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Moving on to everyone's favorite part of the meeting is the mayor's reports and announcements. First off, we start off, this week is a special week for Counselor Peter Angelo, as Thursday will be his birthday, so wish him a birthday in advance. He looks good for 60, he does. What's happened recently, Hunt Manor, which is the campar, campground, had their children's day. For anyone that's looking to do something very scary, get, head down there. It's, it's scary. They've got a haunted hayride, they've got a haunted house, they've got a whole bunch of activities. For the younger kids, I suggest you go during the day, and for the older kids, go at nighttime. Just be prepared that there'll be people sleeping in your bed with you. It's spooky. They do a really, really good job down there. Also, we had an Indian celebration, Navratri, at St. Antoine Hall. I got to do their traditional dancing and some of their traditional foods. Nice reminder of our trip to India. Club Italia, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Morocco, joined me as we cut the ribbon for the new playground equipment, which is fully accessible. It was $80,000 with a lot of work to put it together, so we were happy to be there that day. George Bucater Park Cleanup took place. We want to thank Ann Meyer Key Club and the DECA for organizing the cleanup. The skies opened up and it just rained, and it was muddy and potholes, and not a, not a nice day to be outside, but they were all out there, big group of them. Congratulations to the Ann Meyer students. Rosberg Family Park plaque unveiling. Joining me was Counselor Thompson, Counselor Gates, and Counselor Morocco. And, and of course, it was a great day, because we had all the Rosberg and the Carroll family come together and Frum family. It was, it was a really nice, special day for all the family. And a lot of reminiscing about days gone by, when, since 1916, the Rosberg building had originally, or business that originally started. The 10th Annual Pumpkin Fest took place this weekend at Heartland Forest, and I know that the premier was in town visiting there, as well as the farmer's market. Cook's Mills had their Peace Garden dedication for the War of 1812, and that was a great event, also attended by Counselor Morocco. Again, the skies opened up, and it was cold, windy, and rainy. But I'm sure not as bad as fighting in the war during 1813 at that time. As well, we had the Vidaturna Memorial Dinner Dance at Club Italia. That night, we were joined by Counselor Morocco, Counselor Gates, and Counselor Ianone. And it was a great day to raise money for those that can't afford to play sports in the community. And thank you to the Vidaturna family and all those that supported the event. And as well, I had Andrea Horvath visit me on Friday. We had a nice hour visit and exchanged ideas and issues that we're fighting for in Niagara Falls, and that was a very, very good meeting. Coming up, as you know, last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, Sleep Cheap rooms were released. There's still lots of great rooms available. As well included in this event will be attraction passes to Greg Fruin, the Bird Kingdom, Skyline Tower, and family skate at the Gale Center. This is the 10th anniversary, there's a special element where if you get registered on our website, you just have to go to the city's website at niagarafalls.ca, click on the keychain, and register your email, and you can win a trip to Quebec City on via train and overnight stay, or you can win a fantasy Clifton Hill package, where you get to do all the neat things, or you can win dinner for four at the Rainforest Cafe, whole bunch of neat prizes. All you have to do is register your email, and the advantage to that is, when a new block of rooms comes available, or a last-minute promotion is announced, you'll get an email blast instantly, so you'll always know what's going on with Sleep Cheap. And of course, for those that aren't paying attention, Sleep Cheap, it's our 10th year, where all the great hotel operators in Niagara Falls step up. They offer very inexpensive pricing on outstanding world-class hotel rooms, including Counselor Carrio's hotel at the Oaks. And people can rent City View rooms for $35, Falls View rooms for $45, Jacuzzi Falls View rooms for $65, and Water Park rooms for $85. All of the proceeds raised go to charity 100%. No money goes to administrative costs, and we're proud that we've raised well over $1 million. And the committee gives out to all local charities, Niagara charities. And this is a promotion only available to Niagara residents. We've received calls from very upset people from the GTA, from Hamilton, from Buffalo, all wanting to know if they're part of Niagara. And we're, we're happy to explain geography to them. We're, we like to say it's one of the benefits of living in Niagara, just like living in Florida, there's benefits to some of the attractions they have there, including Disney. But when you live in Niagara, you get to participate in Sleep Cheap. So if you haven't not already booked your room, the Friday is a PD day, so it's a very popular week. Like I say, lots of great rooms available. Go to niagarafalls.ca, click on the keychain, and all the details are available there. Coming up, the Biz Center, which is our business incubator place, is right across from City Hall on Queen Street, grabbing their grand opening tomorrow, which is Wednesday at 5:00 PM. So you want to join us for that. As well, up and coming, the United Way Pooh Boy Auction will be this Thursday, October the 24th, at the Americana, from 4:30 until 8:00 PM. The Niagara Falls International Marathon takes place this Sunday, October the 27th, and Counselor Peter Angelo will be running the half marathon and also representing the city and bringing greetings. Arts and Culture Wall of Fame Ceremony will take place this Saturday, October the 26th, at Niagara Square at 11:00 AM. Niagara Concerts, their next show featuring Louise Petrie, is at the Scotiabank Center on Saturday, this Saturday, at 7:30 PM. Go to niagaraconcerts.ca for information. And for anyone wondering, you've got that person, you don't know what to buy for Christmas or a birthday, for $100, you can get the full series for Niagara Concerts, which includes five shows. Each one of them is worth it. Never mind you get all five shows, including groups like we've heard, Leahy, great dancers, great musicians. It's $100 for the full season. So when you want to buy a present for someone, I highly recommend it. I know Counselor Gates is a member and goes to the concerts as well, and I get to most of them, but go to niagaraconcerts.ca, best value in town for 100 bucks. We're going to be presenting the key to Walter Osteneck at the Fourth Annual Oktoberfest Celebration at the Niagara German-Canadian Club this coming week. The Falls Gala in Memory of Matthew D'Nelli will take place at John Michaels Banquet Hall, take place on November the 1st. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast is going to be next Wednesday, October the 30th, at Club Italia. Doors open bright and early at 6:00 AM. Tickets are available at our office for $12.50. And if you haven't already heard, the keynote speaker will be Nick Walenda. It's a very big deal. Nick is in very high demand. Tickets are flying, you know, we're selling, this will be a sold-out event. If you have not already bought your tickets, I encourage you to do so. It's early, the actual speaking is at 7:00. You're out by 8:00. You're not going to be late for school or work. It's always a big crowd, 500, 600 people, and Nick's got some great stories, something you've probably never heard. He's also going to be bringing his books, that he'll be autographing as well before he heads back. Very, very interesting guy, a great speaker. So again, that's next Wednesday, October the 30th. Buy your tickets, just call the, the mayor's office to get them. Also, Halloween's going to be taking place next week. We just want to remind everybody, be cautious as you're driving down the streets, there'll be a lot of kids, it'll be dark, and we want it to be safe. And lastly, to close out, reminder to the public that city council meetings begin at 5:00 PM. five PM on Tuesdays, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, November the twelfth. That concludes the mayor's reports and announcements. Councillor Gates.
Yeah, Jim, I'd just like to add that I did have the privilege of going on Saturday to Heartland Forest. It was raining, incredible number of people there, it was packed right till, I think I left around four o'clock. Unfortunately, I did miss the premier when she came there, but I want to thank Dan for just an incredible day for the young kids. I took, like I said, I took the grandkids, but he also had a, a couple of issues, so I'm wondering if maybe somebody from staff could talk to Dan and deal with a couple of those issues without getting into all the details, so.
Yeah.
There's a number of people there, so I didn't really answer them, but I thought I'd raise it and make sure that somebody from staff talks to them. But it was a great event, my grandkids had a great time, great place to go.
Yeah, Dan Bowman does a great job out there for Pumpkin Fest, and actually, I met with him this past week, so maybe on the side here, we'll talk with staff, and you can share the concerns Dan has right now. Any other, no comments?
Premier.
What's that? Yeah, he missed the premier.
Premier.
Why not? Well, good.
Okay, moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk. We've got five items. First off, Winter Festival Lights requesting their respective annual fireworks display, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Number two, Recycling Council of Ontario requesting October twenty-first through twenty-seventh be proclaimed Waste Reduction Week in the city.
Moved.
Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Kerrio. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Number three, Camunita di Sant Agidio requesting that, that November thirtieth be proclaimed Cities for Life Day opposing capital punishment. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves.
Oh, no.
No?
I think we should just receive and file that.
Okay.
Very confrontation, yeah, very confrontation, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, we have a motion, we have a mover, do we have a seconder for, for this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Receive and file.
Okay, so no, no seconders then? Okay, so we'll entertain.
Just receive and file.
Okay, councillor Maves requesting receive and file. Okay, seconded by councillor Thompson. We'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, noted. City of St. Catherine's requesting support of their resolution calling for daily go-train service to Niagara. Moved by councillor Thompson? Yeah.
Well, I'd like a little change in the wording. It says to Niagara.
Yeah.
Finish in Niagara Falls.
It actually says that in the, in the.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, where is it now? I was reading it earlier.
It's included?
Yeah, it is.
Let's highlight it.
Yeah, let's highlight it. Somebody find the motion just to confirm? Here it is. Yep. Yeah, it is the second be it resolved, second, last sentence, it says, I'll read it to you, "That council requests the premier and the provincial government to make expansion of go-rail a priority and a commitment to a timeframe for when the year-round service to the Grimsby, St. Catherine's, and Niagara Falls will be initiated." Okay? So moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Morocco. All those in favor? That's very unanimous. And lastly, Region Municipality of Niagara requesting comments on the application of Walmart for tourist exemption under the Retail Holiday Business Act. Moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Maves. All those in favor? And that is approved. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration? Okay, none? So we'll look to ratification of the, no ratification? So now we move to presentations and deputations. Are we good with our time?
Yep.
Okay, first off is Public Library Week. Dr. Louis Vizantie, Chair of the Niagara Falls Public Library Board, is going to make a presentation, as I understand, in recognition of Public Library Week, and will provide council an update on activities at the libraries. Welcome, Doctor. Yeah, are you ready to the microphone there?
I'm over here.
Oh, yeah. It is got a gooseneck, so you can probably stand on both sides.
Libraries are about, I think I've said this before, two thousand years old, maybe older. This is Canadian Library Month. In Ontario, it's, it's Ontario Library, Public Library Week. And guess what, guys? Today is Library Day for you. And we're going to do something quite different. I mean, the libraries today are quite different than they were when we were growing up, different than they were twenty years ago. Nineteen eighty-six, I remember touching a computer, probably in the eighties at the National Research Council. They've become digital resource centers, communications resource centers. They're centers for entertainment, they're centers for research. When we, when the world goes wireless, and cities become wireless, the libraries will be substantially different than they even are now. And just to give you a hint as to the direction in which the libraries are going, we've developed something quite, quite new here at the library in Niagara Falls. And as you know, we have five library sites. They're all connected, they're connected to your homes, you can access special sites, you can do business online with the library. Hopefully, in the future, you'll be able to access digital resources and read online more than you're reading now. Now, I'm reminded that I carry my library card with me. It's a little. Yeah, here it is, a tag. It's a digital library card, okay? The whole library can be contained in a, in a little slot like this. Hopefully, I'll be able to read my books on my vacation by just plugging in somewhere, and I'm sure that's coming. The reason this really hit home to me is that back in the forties, we lost an uncle somewhere in the Soviet Union in the Second World War. None of the family could ever trace where he was actually buried in the Soviet Union, but he was buried in the Soviet Union. I accessed a site, a number of sites in Germany and in the US and in Italy, and not only found it where he was buried, but how he was killed, and with what group he was killed, because it was a portal like this in Italy and the Soviet Union that gave you access. There are plenty of people in this room that had relatives in the World War. And just to say, this is really important in terms of our children. I remember Bill Clinton saying this at a cocktail party we were at, maybe a year ago, that leadership's about creating a future for our children. Doing something about our library resource is about creating a future for our children. Our children's library is one of the best in the country, I think. Now, Andrew Porches has been working on this portal called Niagara at War, and I want him to take you through it. Having said that, okay, I mean, we, we've entered into some partnerships. Partnerships are a key word in today's economy, in today's society. The library's been partnering with, partnering with other libraries, with people in the private sector, to produce a better library. If you listen closely to what's going on in places like Toronto, New York City, abroad, internationally, partnerships really are very important for libraries, as they are for cities, as they are for even transportation systems. Very nice introduction to this whole issue. But I'm going to stop there. We'll answer questions about the portal, or about what's, what other things are going on at the library, but I want you to at least be exposed to this, this slide presentation, Niagara at War, because you might be interested personally in tracing some of your ancestors and where they were in the, in the First World War. Andrew, I'm going to call you. Monica Seymour is also here, our librarian, very competent, dynamic librarian, and we're prepared to answer all kinds of questions except budget, which we're going to be here later talking about budget.
Thank you, Dr. Lou, and Mr. Mayor and councillors, thank you for this opportunity to present the Niagara War Portal. The Niagara Falls area World War One portal is designed to bring together the various resources that are available in Niagara Falls pertaining to the Great War. The focus is primarily Niagara Falls, but so much of the history was tied up in other communities, especially Niagara and Lake, that they will also be included when they're appropriate. And the whole reason for this, of course, being the next year is the hundredth anniversary, beginning of the World War. The portal is being designed in various sections, but interlinks will make it very easy to navigate from back and forth from sections. So record can be first accessed in one area, but it'll link to other areas as it's necessary. It's going to have different sections in it, biographies, the home front, newspaper accounts, and military affairs. If we find that other sections are necessary, then we'll add those later. It's a work in progress. The war lasted for almost five years, so you know, there's a lot of time to go at this. And to illustrate, I'll just go through the biography section very quickly. Each of the sections will be designed with the subsections to fit all the information that we have. So in the biography section, the things we've identified so far, the honor roll, the people who were actually killed in action or died of their wounds after the war, those who survived the war, and then by military unit and by battle, so we can look up and see which Niagara residents were involved in the Battle of the Somme, or you know, whatever battle you might be interested in. And to go through the honor roll, when you click on the honor roll, a list of names will appear. So there's five names here. When we click on Harold Flynn, the following page will appear. The initial newspaper article about Harold Flynn, he was one of four men who went to war on April seventeen, nineteen seventeen. Unfortunately, the next item is he was killed in July of nineteen seventeen. He was training to be an air force officer, and just by the date, it looks like he was killed in a trading accident in Britain. There is a wonderful site called the Commonwealth War Graves Commission, listing each of the people who were killed overseas, and also who died of their wounds afterwards. So here is his record in the War Graves Commission, including down at the bottom here, the cemetery that he was buried in, so you can go, if you're interested, you can visit the cemetery here. In addition, the Veterans of Fair Canada has designed the Canadian Virtual War Memorial, and this has all the people included who were killed from Canada, and also links to the First World War Book of Remembrance, which is in the Peace Tower in Ottawa. So we have taken the page from that and included it here. And in addition, our researcher also found his birth certificate, so that gives a little information about whose parents were, where they worked, yeah, where they worked, and where they lived. So you know, we're trying to make it a memorial to this person type thing. Now, for people who survived the war, links to their local grave sites can also be made. So this is the Virtual War Memorial site for Robert Graham, James Ashworth, who died in nineteen nineteen, so I don't know if he died because of his wounds or in the influenza epidemic afterwards. I would think because of his wounds, because that was directly related to the war. That's something we can find out. So this is his headstone in the local cemetery, and it's linking to the city's cemetery website here as well, so you can, you know, do a memorial to them. There's other material that can also be added. At the top here is what's called a memorial plaque, but was commonly called the Dead Men's Penny, because it looked like a big penny at the time. And this is an honor that each of the Canadians killed in the war were given by the government, and it's a plaque with their name engraved on it. You can't really see it here, but his name is, is on here. And Lieutenant Colonel Laring did some research on that, discovered he originally enlisted in the Corps of Engineers, so this is his, his insignia there for the Corps of Engineers. He then transferred into the one-seventy-sixth Regiment, which was based in Niagara Falls and was a feeder regiment for different battalions overseas, and he was in the third Canadian Regiment, or Battalion in France, so those are his insignias there. Medals can also be photographed and added. We have a Victoria Cross winner from Chippewa, Lieutenant Colonel Graham Lyle, and this, these are his medals. Now, he is also listed in the Canadian Virtual War Memorial, because he died in the Second World War. He became a career soldier. He died in Egypt in, in the middle of the Second World War, but he had many honors. And we do have a history of him, and I'll bet you not very many people in Niagara Falls realize we have a Victoria Cross winner from the Falls. There's also, the newspapers often publish letters home from soldiers if the families allowed them. So this is a letter that was published from, from Charles Dickens. This can be added to his site on here. There are also things going on at the home front, you know, people supporting them, but there was also a plot to destroy the Well and Canal, and leaders were jailed here, and you know, their story is told here as well. So you know, what's going on at home. This is a selection of photographs we have from the, in our website, they're all on our website right now. We have a collection of some like fifty thousand photographs in the library that we are digitizing slowly and slowly. The gentleman in the middle was part of the Well and Canal Force. He was, he's Ernest Fox. He was a well-known photographer. He moved to Niagara Falls about nineteen fifteen, and he moved down to the States in nineteen twenty-five. He took an awful lot of photographs of the city during this time, and also was a commercial photographer. So we have pictures, where's my mouse, up here? We have pictures of troops by the recruits, just by the railroad station on Bridge Street. Over here in Queen Victoria Park during the war, there was, there was a tent city down here, housing people who were guarding the power plants and whatnot, so that's Queen Victoria Park. Holy Trinity Church with the troops and church parade, must be on Sunday morning. One of their members got married at Holy Trinity, and there's a picture of that. And then this is Victoria Avenue, a bit later on. And then troops, this was a common sight here, troops leaving, this is probably the Cayuga steamship going to Toronto on their way overseas. So we have all these types of things that we're going to include in this, this memorial. So where are we now? I was fortunate enough to get a summer grant, and our student identified about twelve hundred individuals from this area who were involved in the armed forces in some capacity. And this is a listing of them on the Well and Canal Force, people from Stanford and Niagara Falls here. They must have been searched and links created to the Commonwealth War Graves Commission, the Canadian Virtual War Memorial, and the Book of Remembrance for those who died. Names have been sent down to the Lincoln Well Regiment Museum in Niagara Lake to see if they have records there as well. And we're searching the newspapers on a daily basis to find articles about the war, about the people who served in it. Materials in the library's local history collection are being searched for information. An information meeting was held a couple weeks ago with a lot of local historical groups and historians. We've identified quite a few potential partners, and there's a list here of those people who are included in this. We're getting very good support from everyone we talked to about this, so you know, it's great. I was at the Jordan Museum last week, where a soldier from Beamsville actually was stationed in Niagara Falls. There was a barracks over on Spring Street, where the Legion is now, and he was there, and he drew a number of detailed maps of the military installations in the area, and so it's great things. So what we're doing now, we're trying to identify other existing sources of digital information that we can just link to, because that's very easy and adds a lot of content to it. Information that isn't digitized yet, needs to be digitized and incorporated into the portal. So the stuff I got from Jordan last week, we brought back, and we're in the middle of, of digitizing that material. Other individuals and institutions are being identified, getting as many partners involved in this as possible. We're going to be doing a call for public participation going out, and having scanning days at the library, so if you have some information about a relative who was in the Great War, some of their attestation papers, their wills, their, their medals, anything like that, we can take those, scan them, photograph them, and include them in here. And I would invite, invite members of council to, you know, participate in this, if you do have information, you know, relatives that were in the war, we'd love to have that and include it in there. A number of people, prominent Niagara Falls residents were in the war. Brigadier General Hill was a mayor in, in Niagara Falls for a number of years, and the Van Der Sluys family had four different individuals. Slus family had four different individuals participate in the First World War as well. So thank you very much, and you know, any questions? More than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments of council? It was very interesting, anyone, anywhere can access these records, and especially, you can be in Australia, and if you have family here in Niagara Falls, it's very, very interesting. Obviously, you put a lot of time into that, and well done. Councilor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, and I guess through you, I just want to say congratulations to the Library Report. I think it's a fantastic resource. It's obviously taken a lot amount of time and coordination to put it together, and I know people are very passionate about their roots and their history, and helping them to find even the smallest of information is something that they're going to cherish forever and share with their children, so congratulations, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, well, here's your chance to, because we're going to have about twenty kids running in here in a second, so stand back. Okay, so next up, I guess maybe we can get someone to invite the OBA champions in. We've got a Niagara Falls Falcons minor Pee-wee baseball team being recognized for four consecutive provincial championships. What's that?
The number of teams that win year after year after year is come to council.
Yeah, well, we've had the same, two teams been winning, yeah. They were out there.
Yeah, they were.
Where'd they go?
Get a cup of coffee.
Yeah. Yeah. Security pick them up. Yeah. Coming? Yeah, well, just the coaches up here, and all the kids can come up the front, yeah. Baseball Championships. Mike?
Good seeing you.
All right. All right, well, we got Mark out there too.
Mark Partier-Creamer?
Sure is. Yeah, any of the coaches, come on up, join me. Huh, coaches? We've got, okay, Ty Bursio, Sandy Bursio, they all here? Come on up, coaches, you're with the team the whole season. Well, first of all, boys, young men, we're very proud of you, very, very special, and as I understand it, we've been checking with our history books, it looks like this is the first ever team in baseball to win four provincial championships. And I don't even know if there's any sports that we've accomplished, is anybody aware of that? But these young fellows have been together for a number of years, and I'm just going to read quickly what happened here. Of course, I've got my brother here, and I always tell him, I taught him everything he knows, and then he says, well, how come we win and you suck? I said, well, because I told him what not to do, that was the key. He just watched me and did the opposite, and that's all he had to do. Tonight at council, we've got Niagara Falls Falcon Minor Pee-wee Baseball Team for OBA Championships for the fourth time. The Greater Niagara Baseball Association, and yes, I played in that great organization one time, and they're still going strong, obviously doing better than ever. Well, this team began practicing indoors in February, so you know about practice, you know about discipline, you know about commitment, you guys didn't just show up and win, there was a lot that happened before you got to the field. With their eyes clearly focused on the Ontario Baseball Double-A Championships, because sometimes you get complacent when you're the champs. And these guys, obviously with great coaching, stayed hungry, and I hope I'm not taking away from anything you're going to say, because when I'm done, does anything you want to add? This core group of players and coaches have been together since 2010. They won their first provincial championship in senior rookie ball. They've won three consecutive provincial championships, and this year they added a fourth. On Labor Day weekend, the Falcons traveled to Windsor to compete in the OBA Championships. And the first game on the Friday afternoon, they faced Sarnia. They won twenty-two to one. Now, I'd be worried after a game like that, you don't relax and get too complacent. Well, the Falcons then went on to face Waterloo, Peterborough, and London on the Saturday. Niagara defeated these teams with a balance of strong defensive play, solid pitching, and explosive offense. Wait, somebody wrote in here, and outstanding coaching. Who wrote that? Is that Mike? On the Sunday, the Falcons' next opponent was Barry, and the Falcons' bats once again came to life, sending Barry Peck. The Falcons made it to the final round and then faced the same London team they defeated the last two years at the Single-A Provincial Championships. The game did not start well, as London came out strong, and Niagara was quickly down by a score of eleven to two. I feel like Casey Kasem up here telling us. The kids don't know both that, you can tell them on the way home. The Never Say Die Falcons continued to fight and play hard, and eventually they were down only one run going into the final inning. The Falcons scored three runs in their half of the seventh to go up by one. The Falcons held their lead into the bottom of the seventh, and in the end, they were crowned the 2013 Double-A Provincial Baseball Championships four times in a row. Congratulations on that. Now, the way we're going to do it, we're going to call each of you up here one at a time. We've got a little gift that I want to explain to you. First of all, personally signed by me certificate that you can put on a shelf and never look at it again. Secondly, each of you, and these are in order, so I don't want to get them out of order, will get your very own BNF shirt. And what we like to remind you is, this has a double meaning. BNF is to be Niagara Falls, be proud of Niagara Falls, and I know all of you made us very proud as you travel across the province, showing that we've got champions right here in Niagara Falls. And champions from way back, back in the days of Bart Mays, when he was a great athlete in the city, to you guys here today. So BNF means be Niagara Falls. It also means be enough. BNF, get it? So you guys can wear these proudly. The other thing that we did do, you'll see the crest for the city on the top here, kind of off-centered, kind of cool. And on the back, we specially had Ontario Baseball Championships, and we put the four years that you've been successful. So we did this as a special from your council to let you know that we're very, very proud of you, so each one of you will get these. And the nice thing about these shirts, they make the guns look good. So you like that. So I'm going to ask your coaches to call each of you by name. We're going to shake your hand, we're going to give you your gift, ask you to stamp here. When we're done, we're going to take pictures, so anybody that's got cameras, you can come up and fire away. Five dollars a picture, if you're okay with that? No, just kidding, it's for your pictures. Okay, so who wants to?
I'll call him.
Okay.
Andy Burdy.
You do me a favor. Yeah. Come on up. Congratulations.
Good job, man.
Blake Bursio.
Good job.
Owen Bouda.
He's going, don't hug me, don't kiss me, please. Balls. Balls, that's right.
Unfortunately, Willie the Hammer Jack couldn't join us tonight, he's at the gym working out.
Lucas La Fortune.
We would be remiss if we didn't recognize our scorekeeper and overall keeper of pitch counts, Sandy Bursio.
Sandy's going to be the last one.
Yeah.
Coach Mike McCray.
You ordered extra small, just so you know.
Assistant coach Ty Bursio.
And our team manager, Mark Fortuna.
What would you guys like to maybe say something about your team, about the parents, about the season, about next season?
You know, this was, it was a very neat and I'd say unique year in the sense that this time a year ago, Ryan and I talked about, you know, looking forward to some new challenges, and at that time, we started trying to move forward with the planning trip to Cooperstown, which I can honestly say might be one of the highlights of any youth baseball player. You know, it was a phenomenal experience. We had a chance to get rid of parents for a week, which these guys all cheered about. I have no doubt they bonded as a group of young men. We played a different state every day. Somehow, we were actually very successful in Cooperstown despite what we were told going in, and you know, just a genuinely great experience. It really, I think, set us up moving forward where, you know, again, in the year of a challenge, we tried to give these young men an opportunity to move up a level. They had a lot of success at the Single-A. We said, let's give it a go, let's move up, we're going to go play Double-A next year. We competed against some of those teams and had some good days and bad, and you know, it was, I really think these guys saved their best baseball to the end and played a heck of a weekend at the OBAs. You know, it truly was, we were down eleven-nothing after one inning, and we hadn't swung the bat yet, and we were down eleven-nothing, and the coach, Ryan, I think, said, we got him right where we want him. And fortunately, one of the parents said, we better win it, because they wanted to get the heck home after a long drive, and you know, the guys hung in there and played great. And next thing you know, we are Double-A Champions, which was, you know, I don't know where the challenge goes from here, I think there are going to be different challenges moving forward, but I know these guys are looking forward to it, so.
Thank you all very much for the job. One more presentation. Well, council, what we're going to do now, we'll line you guys up, we'll do a shot, if that's okay, so we're going to line up, so anybody with cameras, here's your chance if you want to come forward, and where do you want to position yourself? I'll kind of get in the back. And then guys, if you want to, try to get the taller guys to the back. You guys in the front, just take any, just take any, you guys in the front, take any, whatever.
James isn't the short kid anymore.
My buck's a shot, don't ask.
Mine takes twenty seconds to reload.
Okay, good? All good?
Well, good.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much.
Hold on.
Okay, next item, planning matter.
We are at PBD 2013-64. I would ask the clerk if he'd introduce this next item.
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a city-initiated amendment to the official plan to reintroduce the Morrison-Dorchester node policies. Notice was given in accordance with the regulations of the Planning Act by placing an advertisement in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, September twenty-first, and by giving notice by first-class mail to various persons and authorities. Anyone who wants notice of the adoption of Official Plan Amendment Number 113 shall leave their name and address on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Arafida. I now ask Mr. Hrlavich, our director of planning, to explain the purpose and reason for the public meeting for the Official Plan Amendment.
Thank you, Your Worship. The area that's depicted is on the map on the screen in front of you. We were talking a little bit earlier this evening about nodes and corridors. This is one of the nodes that's identified within the city's Official Plan Amendment ninety-four, and what it identifies is the intersection of Morrison and Dorchester. It's a commercial district, and this is an overlay map that would allow residential intensification to occur in order to create an additional market, to boost and strengthen the commercial and industrial services that are found in that particular node. Council adopted Official Plan ninety-four with the exception of the Morrison-Dorchester node. Amendment Number ninety-four was appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board, and all of the other appeals have been resolved with the exception of the appeal that deals with the Morrison-Dorchester node that was appealed by Paletta International. And at the time, council deferred the adoption of this node, because we were waiting to find out whether the Walmart store would be re-tenanted. We were also waiting for the appeal on the Canadian Home Products site, that's the former Chef YRD site, to be redesigned and rezoned for residential uses, and we were also dealing with the plan of subdivision proposed for the Optimist Parklands. We're happy to say that the Walmarts... Plan Amendment Number 113 shall leave their name and address on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Arafida. I now ask Mr. Hrlavich, our director of planning, to explain the purpose and reason for the public meeting for the Official Plan Amendment.
Thank you, your worship. The area that's depicted is on the map on the, on the screen in front of you. We were talking a little bit earlier this evening about nodes and corridors. This is one of the nodes that's identified within the city's Official Plan Amendment 94. And what it identifies is the intersection of Morrison and Dorchester. It's a commercial district. And this is an overlay map that would allow residential intensification to occur in order to create an additional market, to boost and strengthen the commercial and industrial services that are found in that particular node. Council adopted Official Plan 94 with the exception of the Morrison-Dorchester node. Amendment Number 94 was appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board. And all of the other appeals have been resolved with the exception of the appeal that deals with the Morrison-Dorchester node. It was appealed by Paletta International. And at the time, council deferred the adoption of this node because we were waiting to find out whether the Walmart store would be re-tenanted. We were also waiting for the appeal on the Canadian Home Products site, that's the former Chef YRD site, to be re-designated and rezoned for residential uses. And we were also dealing with the plan of subdivision proposed for the Optimus Parklands. We're happy to say that the Walmart's building, the former Walmart building, is now occupied by Target. Canadian Home Products, the Canada Home Products site, was approved by the Ontario Municipal Board for residential development. And the Optimus plan of subdivision is now registered and in the process of being serviced. We've had, so we brought this back forward so that if we can bring that node forward, we could dispense with the last of the appeals. We've sent this out to surrounding properties and MHBC planning consultants on behalf of RioCam, which owns the Zeller's Plaza, owns the Zayers and Staples Plaza, have submitted comments. They want to make sure that we will protect the existing commercial and industrial interests from any future residential development. While they appreciate a new market coming in, they also don't want to have their activities curtailed by residential development. We also had comments submitted by Mark Sturzenjer, who's resident on Pettit Avenue. He backs onto the Zeller's site. And he's asked that we deal with a conflict, and that is that the current commercial policies for the plaza would allow up to a 12-meter-high building, whereas the proposed node would have a two or three-story-high building. The intent of these policies was not to actually take away the commercial policies, but was to make room for residential uses. And they would, any residential use that comes forward would have to comply. So, we will be taking these comments into consideration. The, the notice recognized as well because it is a municipal and regional transit hub, it's on the arterial roads, and it would provide for additional density that I mentioned. The purpose at this point is to work towards a resolution. So, we'll be gathering the comments, the two that were submitted, as well as any from the public tonight. And we'll be bringing those forward as policy changes. And we'll bring that back to council at a later meeting likely in December. So, at this point, we're looking for council to receive any comments and refer those back to staff so we can resolve any issues.
Are there any questions or comments of council at this point? Okay, seeing none. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting may result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Council will now hear from anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed amendment. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Yes, if you-
Is this in regards to the property, uh, Prop Street? The Paletta-
Mr. Hrlavich?
No, it's not. The Paletta development is approved by the Ontario Municipal Board.
Okay, so that goes through without us having any more say on it?
It went to the Ontario Municipal Board, and there was a hearing on that. There was someone from your neighborhood who appeared at that hearing. The Paletta lands- I don't know if it reaches that far. Here. These are the Paletta lands here. So, those are outside of the node.
Okay, well, what was, nobody was informed-
Did you, if you'd like to come up to the microphone so we could, council could hear you? Just up to the mic, see up here, we got a microphone, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. Both people at home that are watching this would like to hear too.
Why weren't we informed on the outcome of this meeting?
The meeting, the OMB hearing?
Yeah.
Nobody knew anything. People are still waiting to find out.
Mr. Beaman, do we have any, or Mr. Hrlavich, who would like to speak for this?
The, the application was appealed. There was a resident, I don't recall his name, who appeared on behalf of the, of the residents for that development and spoke in opposition to the, to the application. Planning staff were there. Planning staff had not supported the density that was proposed by Paletta. Paletta brought their own planning witnesses, and the board sided with the, Mr. Paletta and his planning witness against planning staff and against the, the resident who appeared on behalf of them. And the, the notice of the board is, is final.
But nobody was notified that a decision had even been reached.
How does that typically happen, Mr.?
The decision of the Ontario Municipal Board is sent to the people that ask for it. So, if the parties had appeared at council and, or, and got their name in the list that goes to the Ontario Municipal Board, it would be sent out to those people. There actually were quite a number of people at the hearing.
And nobody got anything.
What was your name, ma'am?
Gail Piazza.
And prior to the-
Which, which is your address? I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Beaman.
It's on Prop Street.
On Prop, okay. I'm sorry.
And prior to the hearing being held, we actually had more than, we had the usual neighborhood meetings, but we had our own neighborhood meeting that I organized and invited everybody that we had notice of to, to discuss a possible settlement resolution of the matter. And that took place, so, I think about three weeks before the hearing itself took place. There were quite a number of people there on the first day of the hearing. And I don't know what the board did as far as sending out notices of the result, but the notices of the result are sent out by the board itself.
Yeah, I'm gonna, our clerk would like to weigh in on-
Well, two things. Number one, the OMB posted their decisions on their website, so you can refer to it there. We do have the sign-in sheet outside the council chamber. If you put your email address, I can make sure that we email you a copy.
And what about the other people? Everybody was told they would be notified one way or another. And nobody was. There's four of us here because I got a letter in the mail. Other people, again, got nothing. Our concerns haven't even been addressed.
Are we speaking specifically to the Paletta property?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm not exactly sure how that typically gets communicated, but, you know, the decision was handed down to the city. It wasn't a city, city decision. So, we have to live by the decision on the Ontario Municipal Board. I don't know, I guess tonight we've got all the media here. We've got, I see all three media covered here. So, it'll definitely get out now. But I'm not sure, typically, do we notify the media, Mr. CAO, or how do we typically handle that?
Mr. Beaman, if I could just take one more crack at it. So, that at our public meeting that was held here, anybody that was in attendance that night and signed the sheet to say they wanted to be part of the process would have automatically gotten notified. If you were here and just attended and didn't sign up to be continued in the process, you would not have been notified. So, anybody that signed up on that sheet and went through the process that our city solicitor had indicated, by either getting notification that you would attend the Ontario Municipal Board hearing, which took place in these chambers several months ago, once the Ontario Municipal Board gives their decision, their decision is final and binding on this council. So, there is no further, it's, it's almost like a higher court, if you will, giving down an order as to what can take place on this property. So, that basically is the end of any further deliberation or discussion or negotiation that can go on.
Okay, but how does that address the traffic in and out of the subdivisions?
At the Ontario Municipal Board, all of those issues were put forward into evidence by either representatives of the neighborhood. Our solicitor was there representing the neighborhood. On the other side of the coin is the developer putting their experts forward. And it's basically like a quasi-judicial hearing. And all of that evidence is given into the Ontario Municipal Board. That body, that hearing officer makes a decision, and that decision is final and binding on this municipality. So, once the appeal is made, unfortunately, the way the process works, that final decision is taken out of the hands of this council and rests with the provincial body called the Ontario Municipal Board. So, that's the way the province planning process works. And that decision came down, Mr. Beaman, several months ago now.
Yeah, midsummer.
So, that decision then would have been mailed out directly by the Ontario Municipal Board to those individuals that participated in that hearing.
Okay.
Now, our clerk has indicated, if you'd sign the sheet outside, we will make sure that you get copies of that. I guess, I guess the point is-
The point is, we don't get anything.
The point is, is that that decision would have been taken out of the public's hand at that point anyway. It would have been a decision that rested at the Ontario Municipal Board. And if you were not part of that hearing and were giving evidence at that hearing, you, you would not have gotten notification of that. We're happy to give you notification of it through the clerk. But, again, that decision is final and binding on this council.
We're not happy about it either, obviously, because we made a decision and we've been, we've been handed down a decision from a higher court, so to speak. We've also got some councillors that would like to comment on it. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I guess I just wanted to say, I mean, we opposed the application by Paletta. I think the issue, I mean, I know that they're not happy with the decision. Again, it wasn't our decision. We didn't want to see that type of density there either. But there's the part after, which is the notification. Whose responsibility does it become to notify the people in the area that the Ontario Municipal Board has made a decision? It would be our responsibility if it happened in these chambers. Whose responsibility is it once it goes to the Ontario Municipal Board?
Mr. Beaman?
The board is responsible for circulating its own decisions. It's the one that makes them.
And do they circulate them to the residents?
They, they circulate them to the parties that express an interest in getting a copy of the decision. Then the, then they post them on, on the website. They don't circulate them en masse anywhere, and that's not done anywhere in all of the province.
Okay, so in other words, then residents who signed, who went to the OMB hearing and signed in at the OMB hearing-
No, no, residents, the, the notice list is determined as of who signs in at this chamber. That list goes forward throughout. So, when the OMB decides, it has the list that was prepared here, which is forwarded to them by the clerk, and they send the decision to all those people.
So, if they sign in here-
Yes.
If they sign in here to our public meeting-
That's right.
That list gets forwarded, and then they should receive a copy from the Ontario Municipal Board according to that list.
Yes.
Now, was that list forwarded from our planning department?
No, it's, well, it's forwarded actually by the clerk. Well, in law, it's forwarded by the clerk. In practical reality, I think the planning department sends it, Dean, but Dean oversees and makes sure that it's done correctly.
So, do we have a problem here? Did it not get circulated?
Well, I think what happened, your worship, was there was a pre-hearing, and the residents were invited to the pre-hearing. Who showed up, I can't say. I don't recall at this point. And the board asked that one member of the, the residential community be appointed to be the spokesperson. And I'm afraid, afraid I don't remember the fellow's name, but he appeared on behalf of the residents and spoke in opposition to the, to the application. And so, he was listed as the spokesperson for the residents, and so therefore he would have been notified by the boards.
Okay, so not the people that signed the list that were here at council chambers, as Mr. Beaman just suggested?
Well, that whole list went to the board. Those people are all invited.
I wanna make sure. That is what is supposed to happen, okay? What Mr. Hrlavich is theorizing is that it didn't happen because a spokesman was chosen. Okay, so what he is suggesting is that because the board chair nominated a spokesperson, that's the only person she sent the notice to of the result. However, having, having said that, that's not what they're supposed to do. And, but the other thing they have to, that we have had problems just with board circulations and other matters over the past year, of situations, most recently in the Barker Street matters. There was supposed to be a pre-hearing in that, and the notice did not go out. And we ended up basically having to phone the chair and say, nobody's coming. Because, I mean, we, I didn't even know the hearing was supposed to happen. So, the board has been having some trouble with its notices lately, and this might just be another one where this has happened.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I, I guess I was just gonna say, we can try to theorize on where the breakdown in communication occurred, but obviously there was a breakdown somewhere. There was a bunch of residents assigned into the public meeting that did not receive notification. Again, we're being told it was the OMB's responsibility to forward the decision to them. Perhaps we can just forward it to them, your worship. That would be the easiest way to do it, because there has been a breakdown.
Definitely. Mr. Arafida?
Yeah, and going forward, we can make a request to the OMB as to who they sent the final decision to. And, you know, sort of work our way backward as far as maybe where something fell through and go from there.
Counselor Gates?
Yeah, I think on this particular issue is, it was very controversial. There's a lot of residents that were opposed to this. The council was opposed to it. It's always a concern when you go to a third party like the OMB. I don't believe they really take in traffic. They don't take in the ability to pay the municipality in a lot of cases. It's one of the reasons why the OMB is being reviewed as we speak. So, I think what we have to do, I think, as a council and maybe as a city, when it's an issue like that, maybe there's gotta be a better way that we can inform all the residents in that area. That's doing a delivery to all the houses with, with it. I think it's fair, and certainly, the criticism is certainly fair that they come today expecting, and it's happened two months ago. So, I think maybe we should have some dialogue with staff to find out how we can inform our residents maybe a little better on something like this, in particular on, on an issue that is very controversial. And again, I can't say enough that this council was opposed to it. And I just think that that might be a better way, because I think it's fair. The residents should have to know. They should maybe be treated a little better. And I think we can work on doing that on a go-forward basis. It's too late on this issue, but on a go-forward basis, I think it's fair to say, what can we do to make sure they're notified?
Definitely. A CAO is also gonna-
Mr. Beaman, just to address, and I just wanna leave it as clear to everybody. This was the responsibility of the Ontario Municipal Board. Our staff have done everything they needed to do. They did their job correctly. The Ontario Municipal Board, if they have not sent out that adequately, that rests on them. I agree with you, though, councillor, that clerk has indicated, we can, we can maybe put some additional checks and balances in on our end to ensure that our residents get notified. But this is clearly falls on the responsibility of the Ontario Municipal Board, and certainly the clerk will look into how we correct it. But our staff completely did everything right. And I want to assure the residents that this council's position, and our lawyer was there defending the residents' and council's position very vocally at the hearing. And I want to make that clear. He was there for the entire hearing, representing this city's position at great cost to not only the, the city, but his time. And unfortunately, it didn't go the way we wanted to. But the residents' position was clearly and very strongly enforced by this council and our staff before that Ontario Municipal Board hearing.
And further that, we'd like to apologize for the breakdown in communication. It didn't happen at our level, but at the same time, we're gonna try to grab this one by the horns. So, going forward in future decisions, maybe we gotta get on the OMB. It's sad that we have to do that. But the fact of the matter is, we fought. It was a good fight. We didn't win, and that's the disappointing part for all of us. I'm sorry that you got caught in the crossfire of miscommunication. OMB maybe didn't do the job they should have done. But just the same, apologize for you having to take time out of your schedules to be here to, to find out the decision that had already been handed down.
So, there was no way to appeal the OMB decision now, right?
Mr. CAO?
Absolutely. In, in, in the province of Ontario, for planning matters like this, a decision by the Ontario Municipal Board is final. And, again, once that appeal is made, it takes it out of the hands of this council, and it rests in the decision by that body.
Is there any way we can make this a displeasure, a little way to thank this animal by their way of being?
Uh, yes, and I think maybe the clerk, there'll be perhaps an address or something of the Ontario Municipal Board. You could always write to them directly and voice your displeasure there.
I'm sorry? Did you wanna come to the mic, sir? Because I'm having a hard time hearing you. Maybe you could just state your name too, if you don't mind.
My name's Thompson, 11 Brecken, Brecken Street.
Thank you.
I attended the, the pre-hearing, and the way that was, was handled, I was extremely disappointed about it. This woman comes in and says, all stand. She could have been anybody. She could have walked in off the street. Apparently, she was a judge. We don't know that. She threw out one of the residents because his phone went off twice. I don't know what she would have done if it had gone off a third time. Would she have called the police to have him removed? To me, it was, and then Paletta's lawyer asked for a adjournment, and it was about 10 months. I mean, why, why couldn't, sorry, why couldn't his witnesses have been at that pre-hearing? He knew it was going to be come up, and yet it was put off. Would that have been put off for the resident? I don't think so. So, and then somebody said tonight that it was a- So, and then somebody said tonight that it was a spokesman appointed for the residents. I never appointed anybody to speak for me. So I really don't know what's going on here, but it really seems, seems as though we've been railroaded. And then, as far as the detail goes, with the OMB's decision, there's no point in protesting this thing. The main protest was putting in an apartment block, apartment blocks in a residential area. I think somewhere it says that, somewhere in the planning, it says it will be compatible with what's there presently. As far as I know, there are no apartment blocks between Thorlston Road and Lundys Lane, apart from a condominium, which was railroaded through in the face of the protest from the residents. That's all I've got to say on that.
Thank you very much. Councillor Carey would like to comment.
Well, it's unfortunate, Your Worship, but I don't want them to think that, as Kent Todd said, we spoke for them. We represented them. We sent our solicitor for them, and we voted against it for you. We did all we could. It went to a higher level, and it's obvious that the OMB doesn't really care what our residents think. They only care to enforce the policy set down by the provincial government. It's unfortunate, but we did the best we could. Our lawyer did the best he could. Our staff did the best they could.
Does that mean we're going to have 68 stories apartment blocks in the Paletta subdivision now?
Yes. I don't know. Mr. Beaman, is that what, was it 68 story buildings? Is that what was finally approved, or Mr. Hirlavich, whoever knows best?
There would be three-story townhouses on Crop and Pettit, and then behind that would be, I believe, two buildings of four stories. Behind that, next to the railway tracks, would be two buildings of six stories.
And what about the traffic access?
The traffic, it was expressed to the board, the same as the witness came to this council, and they said that it would dissipate, it would be taken down, University to Dawson and out Dawson to Dorchester, and that would be leaving in the morning, and at night, it would be returning along Crop Street into the property. That was the evidence that was presented by Paletta's witnesses.
Now, if I may, Mr. Mayor, in my understanding at this point in time, there's been no development permits or development applications come forward. I think what the planning director has highlighted to you is the maximum allowed under the OMB decision. We will not know if there is a lesser type development or different development of a lesser density come forward until we see a development application end up on our doorstep. So that is the worst-case scenario. At the end of the day, they may come forward with a different scheme with lower density, but that's the maximum they could build. But as we speak right now, we have not seen a development, a formal development application for building permits come through our door yet.
Okay. Are there any final questions or comments of council? Okay? Council and public are reminded that the purpose for tonight's meeting is to consider the adoption of an official plan-
Just to receive comments.
Amendment and to receive comment. The public meeting with respect to the official plan amendment is now concluded. Is there a member of council that would like to make the motion? They recommend? It's just to receive the report, is all that we're looking for. Moved by Councillor Carey, seconded by Councillor Maves. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? And the report is, in fact, received. So again, I appreciate you coming out tonight, and if you, okay, Councillor Gates is opposed. If you'd like to leave your addresses, your email addresses, we'll be happy to get in touch with you, A, to give you a copy of this, and B, to give you the contact at the Ontario Municipal Board, or you can maybe voice your displeasure with the way this was handled, and we can do the same from our end as well. Thank you very much.
Is it outside?
Yeah, just outside there, yeah, the CAO is gonna point it out to you. Try to write clearly.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Next up, resolu-, yes, Mr. Clerk?
Your Worship, there's actually two resolutions that staff are proposing related to the Small Rural and Northern Municipal Infrastructure Fund, the Kayler Road one, which is in your package, and then in additions tonight, Robinson Street reconstruction. So it's staff's recommendation, we would forward both.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that we move both resolutions. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's passed unanimously. Next up, our bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments for tonight?
Your Worship, a few things. There is an additional bylaw in your package, which is related to the, a bylaw that's required under the Building Code Act. So we will actually substitute that bylaw into 2013-158, because that bylaw was related to the intermunicipal tax collection agreement, which council, I guess, rejected this evening, so the bylaw listed on your agenda will not go forward. And it's my understanding that under bylaw 2013-156, which deals with some traffic matters in relation to a matter that was at council last meeting, the bylaw refers to, let me just grab it here, it's bylaw 2013-156, and if you go to page two of that bylaw, referring to Dorchester Road, that the parking prohibition be a .36 meters north of Douglas Street and a .60 meters north of Douglas Street. That 60 meters is going to be changed to 80 meters, which I think is in keeping with the request at the last council meeting. So I'd ask that council, see?
Move the first reading, Your Worship.
Okay. Do you want to speak to the bylaw?
No, I was actually, no, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that the bylaw has been given a first reading. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous?
So bylaws 2013-154 to 2013-160, as amended, be read a first time?
Second and third.
Okay, moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Maves, that the bylaws be given a second and third reading. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved.
So bylaws 2013-154 to 2013-160, read a second and a third time and passed.
Okay, new business. Do we have any new business tonight? Councillor Thompson?
Yes, just very quickly, as a result of, as my comments regarding the Peninsula Corridor not going ahead and other changes, the extension of the 406, I'd like to move a resolution that would, I think, assist with our hospital development on Lyons Creek. The MTO strongly consider aligning the east-west corridor to culminate at Lyons Creek and the Q E W, supporting the location of the new Niagara South Hospital site at Lyons Creek and Matros Road.
Okay. And moved by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Morocco, that we ask the MTO to make sure the east-west corridor comes to Lyons Creek Road where the new hospital will be built. That's the motion. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. A couple weeks ago at council, we received a report that was done by Niagara College in regards to, I guess, incorporating some solar panels at different city home facilities. And I know, Your Worship, that there is a task force at N D E I that has looked at some city facilities as well. Couple meetings ago, we talked about the fact that the province is going to be opening up another FIT program, or another F I T, Feed and Tear Program, and they've announced, Your Worship, that the program is going to open on November 4. So the cost, the cost of putting in an application for the city of Niagara Falls is $500, and what I'm being told, Your Worship, is that the province has grant monies available, up to half a million dollars. I know that if we were going to submit an application, we would be looking at doing it for the new bus facility that we're building. That would be apparently the best municipal building to apply for, especially in terms of the grant monies that are available. Your Worship, it doesn't commit us to anything if we put in an application and see where the province has a stand. Actually, it's better to put an application in, because we can pull out anytime we want. We have no commitment whatsoever, but putting in an application allows us to at least see what type of grant money the province of Ontario can give us to incorporate some solar panels into one of our municipal buildings. So, Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that staff initiate an application under the current intake of the Feed and Tear Program, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the municipal council support resolution if appropriate. And once again, Your Worship, the cost of the application, or the application fee is $500. We're not committed to anything beyond that. We'll put the application in, we'll see what the province of Ontario approves us for, we'll get a report back after, and we'll make a decision later on. It obligates us to nothing, but it actually allows us to be in the game.
Gets us in the queue.
Exactly.
Oh, that's great. Okay, so we have a motion by Councillor Peter Angelo, that we submit an application for the Feed and Tear Program, and staff be authorized and us to put this forward. Okay? That's seconded by Councillor Thompson. Is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Excellent. Any other new business? You've got to be kidding me.